Okay, our meeting is called to order. Good afternoon and Happy New Year to those that I have not had an opportunity to see since last year. Of course, today's work session is our, I believe, third work session of this nature, utilizing our new format. And I think that we're moving closer and closer to the practice and model that is our goal for our work. And so hopefully today's conversation will help us get closer to that goal. Just before we begin with the agenda, of course, we are all aware that over the Christmas break, we did lose one of our MPS family members, the person of Debbie Honiak. And I would ask that you would join me for just a brief moment of silence in her memory and honor. Thank you. So, we will follow the agenda as printed. And before I offer some comments about the agenda and how we will proceed, I do want to thank, on a lighter note, Dr. Savigny for her willingness to provide assistance to help me return back from the Ukraine.[106.02][106.02](Laughter). She was the only one, the only one who sent money.
I wanted to make sure he wasn't stranded. I was willing.
And so, it's in, you know, crisis like that, you really, really learn, you know, where people are, where your friends are.
He doesn't read that much.
So, thank you.
I just need to leave.
You did what?
I just need to leave.
I hold you in high regard as well, Rodney.
He was worried about a computer virus.
So, as we move through today's agenda, a couple of things I wanted to mention. One, I want to thank the administration for their work in getting us as much of the material as early as possible for our review and consideration, and an opportunity to process and email in for questions. And in that regard as well, I think we're certainly getting closer and closer to where we want to be. I would also add that we know that the budget discussion is a very important part of today's discussion, not to suggest that teaching, learning, and others aren't, but we do need to be able to give adequate time to the budget discussion. So, I would ask that we be very mindful of our time, and I'm going to do my best to help move us along expeditiously, albeit efficiently as well, so that we can, we're not jammed up at the end of the meeting with less than adequate time for the outcome that we need in terms of agreeing on our priorities moving forward as we get deeper into our budget planning season. Having said that, we're ready now for 2.01, Human Resources. Dr. King, any opening comments or thoughts?
Chairman Houston, members of the board, I echo what you've already pinpointed. We feel as if our movement and this direction with the agenda is going to provide efficiency in reference to the bottom line that's going to get us to our priority assembly was for the strategic plan. With that said, 2.01 is designed to consist of a Human Resources Departmental Report. And with that said, I will defer to Dr. Burt Song and designate him.
Again, Happy New Year, Dr. King, Dr. Houston, school board members, Dr. King. This afternoon, I will be providing an update to you regarding staffing efforts I sent to you over the Christmas break or over the winter break, a report entitled Retention of Highly Qualified and Effective Teachers. And so, I want to take some time this afternoon to review that report and also to answer any questions that you may have regarding that report. First of all, since it's a new report, I'd like to go through and tell you how we set this report up. Initially, you were receiving from me information regarding schools challenged by retention on a monthly basis. And as my team and I have worked to look at school retention or retention by school, we noticed that some of the schools that we were looking at on a quite frequent basis, those were not the schools that necessarily needed the attention. So, we thought it would be helpful that we provided this data to you related to all of the schools in the district, so that we can follow the trends at each school and address concerns as they come about. So, if you will take a look at the report, again, it's the retention of highly qualified and effective teachers, which happens to be one of our goals that we've established for our strategic plan for this school year. On the left-hand column, you will see the names of the schools or auxiliary sites. And then, we have the job group. There are only two job groups mentioned or noted in this report. There are teachers and non-classroom teachers. Non-classroom teachers would be school counselors, media specialists, psychologists, social workers, staff who have teacher licenses or teacher contracts that are not providing direct instruction to children on a daily basis. So, those are the two job groups that we have noted on this report. Then, we have the reason for termination. Now, as you know, terminations can be voluntary or involuntary. And so, we wanted to provide you the specific reasons why teachers are leaving our schools, and again, specific to each site. We started with July 2013. Again, we want to use this as baseline data for next year. So, as we're looking at trends from here on out, we will be able to compare July data to, from last year to this year, and so on and so forth. Then, you will see the 2013-2014 total termination number, again, from July until the end of December, and then the termination percentage. And then, we also provided data from last school year, so that you could get a big picture of what happened or went on in the school last year. That was 2011-2012, from July 2012 until June 2013. So, as you can see, again, I've reported out to you on a monthly basis, so schools challenged by retention. And I'm sure, as you looked at the report over the break, that you've noticed that some of the schools had a high turnover rate, and you may have specific questions about individual schools. But again, we gave you the data for each school. And at the end, a key was provided for you. And so, you can see, at this point, we have terminated 45 teachers for a 1.7 percent, at 1.7 percent. So, are there any specific questions? I know you probably want to hear more about, okay, we've got the data, now what are you doing about it? So, I'm sure you're very interested in that. So, are there any questions before we start talking about the strategies?
For future use, as we get into budget discussions, what would be helpful is go back three years. What would be helpful to know the number of teachers that exited or the number of teachers that came onboard, you can look at it one way or the other, three years ago, two years ago, and this past year cumulatively? Just in taking a look at where we're going to predict that we're going to go, we're going to have a demographic report. I don't need that tonight. I just would like to have it available at a time when you have the other information regarding the starting season.
And I feel confident that we can provide the data. Now, we may not be able to break it down by month like we have here.
I just want total number, in other words, like 100 teachers left three years ago, 200 teachers left last year, and 10 teachers left this year, something like that.
Absolutely.
Just total, for discussion on the budget. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Just one point of clarification. I know that we've talked about highly qualified, and that's based upon credential, correct?
Correct.
And highly effective is based upon something else that I don't know to what extent we've defined that. But in this chart, you're saying highly qualified and effective. Is that truly the case, or really just looking at highly qualified?
We're really just looking at highly qualified. We would say, for example, if you have a teacher that, for whatever reason, they have been put on a plan of action, and they have gone through the professional review board process, they could have been recommended for termination. We're seeing right now that we don't have any teachers at this point that have been recommended for termination due to performance issues. So, we are suggesting that, based on that information, that these are effective teachers, because there is a process to address teachers who are not performing in the classroom.
The question you're making, are you talking district-wide or per school?
I would not want to spend that much time just district-wide. I'm just trying to predict, as we look at the demographics, and we're going to look at a whole lot of other things, I would like to know the last three or four years, what our trends have been, so that what we can predict might be the trends in the next year or so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Several questions about the report itself. First question is, as it concerns the number of years of principals on this, is this the number of years of experience in Norfolk Public Schools that these principals have, or is it the overall?
That's a great question. The numbers here reflect the number of years the principal has experienced at that location.
At that location.
At that location.
Okay.
Because, for example, if you look at one school, and the turnover was horrendous last year, for example, you would want to know, has that principal been there for three years? Is this the principal's first year? And so, we thought that it was important to know how many years that they've been in that particular building. Because, as you know, leadership impacts turnover.
Right. Okay. I noticed that PB Young Principal's not listed. Did I miss that?
It should be on here.
Put under P, let's see if it's.
We'll look under P and then under Y.
Okay.
Yes, it's on, yes, it's the, not the last page, the page previous to the last page.
Okay, so it's not this one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Previous to the last page.
Okay, the principal is not listed. I see what you meant. Yes, you're right. The principal's name is not listed. You're absolutely right. So, that's a correction that we need to make. We just need to add her name to the chart.
You know, it's interesting that you said that, you thought that by providing this chart, the perception of the movement of the number of teachers who are moving out of the vision and so forth. That's right, because as I looked at the statistics, my impression over the past few months is that we were losing many more teachers. And I don't pick that up on this chart. And it may be just because it's spread out, I don't know, but this does give you a different perception of the number of teachers that are lost. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do understand what you're saying, because in our personnel session on a monthly basis, you'll have all of those teachers there. And so, it may seem like a lot, but when you look at it compared to other schools, or, you know, being broken down by school, instead of looking at like 10 teachers that may have left in one month, it may be one teacher here, one teacher there. And so, it doesn't seem as overwhelming, perhaps.
The other thing that I would like to know, I'm not asking for a data request, but I would want to know from you, based on what you know of the timeframe from last year, from July to December, the number of teachers that we have lost, 45, what does that look like in comparison to the number of teachers that we lost last year over the same timeframe?
That's a great question. I think it was Mrs. Doyle who asked that the last session. And my response to that was, I'm very comfortable with the data that we provided for this year. I would not be as comfortable with the data that we would be able to retrieve from the previous year. So, and that's why we are using this as our baseline as we move forward. But I do believe that we will be able to get numbers for the whole school year, like for three years ago, but we would not be able to perhaps break it down by school and by reason, if that makes any sense.
If that makes sense. I think that what Dr. Stewart has asked also would be helpful with that regard.
Absolutely.
Last question is, is there a, is there somewhere in our, in the amount of the statistics that you provide for us, a data that shows the longevity of teachers in a particular school? For instance, would I be able to look at a school site and say, well, this school overall has, some of our more challenged schools would have, a teacher corps that has a much longer longevity than other schools? There is, there are those statistics?
Yes, in fact, when Dr. King presented to the Accountability Committee, we were able to provide the data for the schools that he mentioned. We had to go in and pull it. It's not just available, but we do generate those reports. So, yes.
Okay.
Yes. So, if you're looking at a particular school, and you want to know the number of years of experience of the teacher corps, we would be able to provide that.
Well, I have noted that you have been placing teachers with much more experience in some of our challenged schools. And so, I wanted to be able to see how that, the movement of that, because I think that that, of course, is a good policy.
Yes. And we do try very hard to do that. And I remember, recall last month, that there was one teacher who had zero years of experience at an elementary school that was challenged by retention, and there was a question about that. And I had to do research, and I found out that one teacher was moved to another school based on mutual agreement. Of course, the executive director was involved in the decision. It wasn't a good fit for the teacher. She was a brand-new teacher. But because she was good, and the principal felt that she could be successful in another building, we allowed her to transfer to another building. And so, the other teacher that you saw in the report, who had zero years of experience, was also a brand-new teacher. So, it wasn't like two brand-new teachers replacing two different positions. It was that one position in that school.
And that was the school in which you put a teacher, veteran teacher with 21 years?
Yes, and that's the one that you noted. Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I just think this is an excellent report.
Thank you.
I compared it to the report that you gave us last time, and I think this is exactly the type of information that we need, so that we can start building these comparisons and looking at trends. So, I just wanted to say thank you to you and your staff for putting this together, and I'm glad that we're doing it, and we're being very transparent about it.
Thank you. I appreciate that feedback, and the team appreciates it as well.
So, you raise a very good question. What are you doing about it?
That's a great question!
It was your question.
Yes, I knew you would want the answer to that. I can tell you that we meet with the executive directors on a regular basis. And anytime we have a teacher that is resigning for any reason, again, they may not contact the principal initially. So, we make sure that the executive directors are involved. They know the reason that this teacher may want to leave. They come to our office. The teacher is bought in. We talk to the teacher. And it could be a situation where we can save the teacher because she's a good teacher or he's a good teacher, but the school may not be a good fit, so we allow them to transfer to another school. And I know the executive directors have worked very hard to create a collaborative and supportive climate for our new teachers, and I can give you an example of that. I know at Lafayette Winona Middle School, I believe it was yesterday, they had a session for their new teachers, and I understand they hold them on a regular basis. They have targeted professional development related to, I believe Dr. Charbonne said, classroom management strategies, just instructional delivery, you know, dealing with parents and those kinds of things. So, principals are working hard to provide a supportive climate for their teachers, and that's very important. And district-wide, all of the new teachers, it's an expectation that they be assigned a mentor, an in-house mentor, a teacher, a veteran, experienced teacher in the building, as well as a district-level mentor. So, there's lots and lots of support for new teachers.
Is that, that's a new policy, right?
I'm not, I can say that. I can assure you that it's happening this year, that, you know, the assignments are being made.
When I looked through the report, I was looking at the reasons for why teachers were leaving, and there are some places where, I believe you saw, was it dissatisfied, right? So, help me to understand how this works here.
Okay.
For instance, I see that down at the, what is it, the Granby School, you see dissatisfied there. No statistics there, but you don't see that anywhere else on these first schools. Why is it popping up there and not in other places, for instance?
That's a great question. The reasons that we have listed are specific to that school. So, if you don't see dissatisfied listed for Baby, for example, we didn't have any teachers that left last year or this year because they were dissatisfied.
Okay, so you include last year and that, and that's why?
Absolutely.
Okay, I've got it.
Yes. 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 Okay. I'm looking like, people are looking like I need to move on, don't either. Okay?
I'm sorry.
Because we have additional data to share?
This, this.
Okay, all right. All right. Also, I wanted to give you briefly an update on the math specialist and reading specialist. I know that's always of interest to you. Again, out of 40 positions, we have 35 math specialist positions that we have filled. However, we still have four, I'm sorry, five, it could be five. We've identified all 40, but we still have five teachers that we need to backfill in math. And as you know, math is a very difficult area to staff at this time. But we are at 35 out of 40 positions with five more teachers needing to be backfilled. But those positions, we have identified teachers for that. Reading specialist, we have 38 of the 40 positions filled, and we're looking, we only have two positions at the secondary level that are still vacant at this time. So, any questions about reading or math specialist? Yes?
How are we dealing with the allotted monies that we had for these teachers, or these prospective salaries?
Uh-huh. Well, we don't do, we don't do anything with them until the position is filled. But the monies are there to support the position when we are able to fill the vacancy.
So, will it show up as a positive amount? Yes, okay, and that'll just be money that we can use for other things, because we haven't filled it yet?
It would be considered unexpended at this point, and anything remaining at the end of the year, well, through that point, will remain in that account. We wouldn't necessarily arbitrarily spend it on something else.
Okay.
It could be part of our year-end expenditure savings resulting from turnover or vacancy that we would have at any given year.
Okay. Okay. So, I'll move along to elementary interventionist staff. Do you have a question before I move on, Mr. Jordan?
Yes, yes. You did the math specialist, might as again, the total number of reading and math specialists that were in previous year, classroom teachers that became reading and math specialists?
I can tell you with confidence, the majority, the majority.
So, then, are we then, since we took those classroom teachers out, are we then following up to see how well, I guess, backfill, or whatever the terminology that you use, that the teachers that are replacing those teachers that were in the classroom, are we providing any type of follow-up support, just observation of how those classrooms are doing since we pulled those teachers out?
Sure.
Or they chose to come out, whatever the appropriate terminology is?
Absolutely. I may have to pull in Lisa Forman just a little bit, because I know she may have some feedback as it relates to her teacher specialist going out in the core content areas, or core content coordinators. I do know that the principals, of course, are responsible for getting in classrooms and conducting formal and informal observations, and providing frequent feedback to the teachers regarding their performance. All of this information is shared with the executive directors in their reports, and if they want to speak to their follow-up, I'm sure they may want to chime in just a little bit.
Yeah, I don't know if I need to detail. I guess it's more of a, just try to make sure that we're watching it, because if we, in the new year, if we say we want to increase the number, and we just find that we're pulling teachers out of the classroom who may be effective in the classroom, and we make them specialists, and they may be effective at specialists, but then we lose in the classroom.
Yes, we understand.
So, just try to make sure we aren't causing another unintended consequence.
You're absolutely right. Okay. Elementary school interventionist staffing. I can tell you, at all of our schools challenged by retention, we have successfully filled all of those interventionist positions. It appears that we're at about 86 percent. So, I don't know if you have questions about that? Okay. All right. The class size reduction teachers, we had, of the 10 positions that are funded, we have filled seven of those 10 positions. And we are having a job fair again this month, on the 24th, I believe. We plan one for the 24th, and we're hoping that we will be able to fill those three positions. I know there were questions, especially at the last board meeting, about gifted education teachers. We have 28 operating budgeted positions, and 27 of those 28 positions are filled. There's a vacancy at the elementary level, and that's a position that hasn't necessarily been assigned to a specific school at that time. So, 27 of 28 positions have been filled as it relates to gifted education.
Are we pulling teachers from the classroom to fill the gifted slots, or are they coming from, are they new?
We've been successful with getting some new candidates. Jackie Wilson, Dr. Wilson staffs that area. I don't know if you want to add any feedback about that?
We haven't been as successful as we would like, encouraging new employees to join our staff. We have had opportunities to look at those that are already in the district that have gifted ed endorsements, and tried to work with them to see if they are interested in joining the team. But in order to do that, we have to make sure that we fill their positions before they can even fill a gifted education teacher's position. We have also started a cohort, so that we may train or begin to train teachers that may be interested in becoming gifted teachers.
Dr. Burt Song, borrowing from Dr. Stewart, where he speaks of being superlative, are we finding that our challenge with attracting new talent to the district, is it a salary issue? Is it a climate issue? Is it a school issue? I mean, is it, you have any sense of what we may need to consider as a board to give you and the administration, something that may be missing that would make the specialists and gifted resources teachers see Norfolk as a great place to come and take advantage of the opportunity?
A financial incentive certainly would be embraced. I'm sure we would be able to attract additional teachers outside the district with a financial incentive. I do believe that would, that would help.
In addition, certainly, being competitive in that regard, from a financial standpoint, is important, absolutely. In addition, the whole notion that we have discussed throughout the strategic plan and its implementation that relates to changing perception, marketing, telling the story, accurate story, being transparent, however, pinpointing those things that are positive and incremental improvements and increases in how we do our work in terms of who we are, I think that's of vital importance as well, in addition to the financial piece. What we have to determine, in my view, centers around if one is outweighing the other. I can't answer that question at this point. However, I know that there is a, is a perception issue that we have, that we have to overcome.
Absolutely. That is true.
And results, and some other things will, will help us with that.
And I'm glad that you brought that, you brought up that point, Dr. King, because we are fighting a perception issue. We do have an image issue that we're trying to, we're working very hard to overcome, and that impacts the pool of candidates that we have, certainly regarding the, related to the quality of the pool. While we may have many applicants, we want the applicants to be highly qualified, highly effective, good track records and things of that nature. And we're feeling as if, and we had that discussion this morning, that many of our candidates are not qualified for the positions for which they apply. that, um, many of our candidates are not qualified for the positions for which they apply. So that would help tremendously. I'm sorry.
Is that all you have?
Um, I was just going to tell you about one job fair that we had. We had our first annual meet and greet in, um, December with, um, new graduates and we were able to hire at least three-fourths of the, of the, um, candidates that attended that job fair. It was well-received. We had our Strolling Strains there. We had our Teacher of the Year there. Um, we had some other teachers, um, from the district, from different schools there. It was a wonderful event. And so, again, we're continuing to have job fairs and to recruit and ensure that we have the best and the brightest for our children.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, ma'am.
Well, can we talk about perception? Um, you know, we do a survey at the hospital about what we recommend to other professionals to come and join CHKD. Where are we with a survey of our teachers? Um, are, are we thinking about doing that? I know that I had, uh, sent out some information about, you know, do we want to survey our teachers about would they recommend Norfolk Public Schools as a place of employment to their friends and their colleagues? And then, um, as far as, um, the climate survey for this year, is that, when, when are we due to let that, um, take place and then get the results for that?
Okay, I believe it's April, um, of this year, the climate survey will be administered. And, um, I don't, we have not implemented a separate survey, but certainly that would be something that we should consider. Yeah. Thank you.
Teaching and learning and, uh, school leadership.
John Houston, members of board, teaching and learning, school leadership development.
We presented through Dr. Savigny and several teammates.
Good afternoon, Dr. Houston, Dr. King, members of the board and all others. Uh, we're excited today to share with you the results of our first district, excuse me, district-wide common formative assessment. Uh, today, we will share with you the results in terms of elementary, middle, and high school. We'll share strengths and challenges by content area. We'll share with you the next steps in terms of professional learning and support by content as well as that which is unique to focus and priority schools. And we'll also share with you next steps, uh, in regard to leadership support. Once our presentation comes up, uh, the second slide will be the cycle for results. And as we're waiting for that to come up, I just want to remind you that it is our instructional framework and it's non-negotiable at the district level as well as the building level inside all of our classrooms. And that the district-wide benchmarks are just one example of how we model implementation of the cycle for results by administering, uh, the, uh, the assessments and then following with a written analysis that is unique with support and specific actions. And Janelle, if you'll go, oh, you have it, next one.
Okay, thank you. Um, our benchmarks are designed to gauge student mastery. And they gauge student mastery on chunks or segments of the Virginia curriculum. Our target is that of seventy percent because that is the accreditation benchmark established by the state of Virginia. Once we get into the data charts, you'll find the seventy percent target or the absolute is identified by a red line on the chart so that we can compare where our progress is as we make movement towards that target. Um, you'll remember that we administered a pre-assessment in September. And when we're looking at those charts in just a minute, those results are deter, are displayed on the blue bars. And then our first benchmark that we administered in November, those results are identified on each data chart by the green bars. In just a few minutes, Dr. Bailey will walk us through the assessment results. Dr. Corbin will share with us and guide us through the content strengths and challenges as well as the next steps. And then our executive directors will outline their specific leadership support at each level. With the results of this benchmark, we needed to see a proficiency rate of at least twenty-five percent. Any grade or content that did not yield at least twenty-five percent proficiency was determined to be a hotspot. And the professional learning, support, and interventions that we share with you today have already been implemented and will be assessed very soon. Benchmark two will be administered in February and our target for that assessment will be at least fifty percent. And then the post-assessment will be administered in April and our target for that will be seventy percent. And we're sticking with the seventy percent because that is the accreditation benchmark that was established by the state of Virginia. Do you have any questions about that? Okay, not, Dr. Bailey?
Thank you, Dr. Savigny. Um, as we move forward, I just wanted to mention that, you know, sometimes we may, uh, refer to it as our district benchmark assessment. Sometimes you may see we have referred to it as our district common formative assessment. And so as we adjust to that transition, we'll make sure that we have those different categories straight as we move forward. This particular chart, as Dr. Savigny mentioned, the blue bar represents our, uh, percent proficient for our September pre-assessment. And certainly, our true measure of that would be when we administer our post-assessment, which is scheduled for April. But our, our first DBA, or if you will, our second CFA, uh, was administered, um, around the first part of November. And this is the, uh, performance that we have seen as we collapse the information, starting with elementary. Uh, we collapsed three, four, and five for English, three, four, and five for writing, even though grade five writing is the SOL assessed area. Three, four, and five math, three, four, and five history, three, four, and five science. I'm sorry, three and five science are for, um, the SOLs and three and five for history for the SOLs. As we move forward, another way of looking at this data broken down just at the next level is by the individual tested subject area. And so we try to, normally we would not overlay our pre-assessment over the CFA because it is not the same test. However, our second CFA is a portion of what we expect our students to know by the, uh, fourth CFA or the post-assessment. So in this way, you are able to see, blue line represents no instruction has taken place and this is the performance of our students at the proficiency level. And the green bar represents the percent, uh, proficient after instruction has taken place. So you can see that it varies across grade level as well as content.
So the blue line is when the children start at school?
Yes.
And they were tested on subject area that would cover the whole year or just what they would be tested on for the upcoming CFA?
The entire year.
The entire year, okay. And then the green line, um, is, uh, instruction that has taken place on just the content area that they have been instructed on?
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct.
And we're, are, we're aiming for a twenty-five percent proficient?
For this first.
For this first one, right, okay.
Needs to increase every administration.
Yes, our goal is twenty-five.
Right, at this point, yes. And so certainly, um, as Dr. Savigny mentioned, we have remediation as well as acceleration of the, uh, content taking place.
Next, I follow. The blue line plus green line is the sum of how they performed on the year tests plus how they performed on the, we'll just, I'll just say quarterly tests, is that correct?
Okay.
So if I look at the green line alone, is, does that show me the percent for the quarterly tests?
Yes. Yes, and, and the blue line is overlaid, so both, both measures start at zero percent.
So in actuality, the blue shows you how they did on the pre-test, which covered the entire year.
Right.
The green, what's showing now is actually showing you the percentage of growth that they made from the, from the beginning because it's overlaid with the blue.
Well, that was my question because if the, if the blue line is for the full year and the green line is just for the quarter, then how are you able to say that the green line is growth over the blue line if they're testing different?
Exactly, and that's why, a moment ago, Karen said typically we would not put a pre-test on this type of report, but we did want to show you where we started from and where we are now. But you do have to keep in mind that the green is measuring just a portion of what was, exactly.
So grade, grade four science, seventy-three percent is what we had as a district-wide grade four science, uh, district-wide for the first quarter based upon the scope or whatever it is that you taught during that time period.
That is correct. Yes.
No, no. Seventy-three percent of the students mastered, mastered the skills that were assessed.
Gotcha.
Yes.
So that would mean that grade five reading, there was no increase?
Yeah.
Right, it's just a little bit below the, um, the pre-assessment. And what we have found is that with grade five, because grade five writing will be the first SOL assessment that will be coming up in March, that a lot of focus has been placed on the writing components of English.
One more qualified question.
Sorry.
So, so the twenty-five percent expectation, that was twenty-five percent against the quarterly expectation, not the twenty-five percent against the year expectation?
Correct.
So if we had the expectation of twenty-five percent and we scored and the children scored seventy-three percent, then that's far and beyond.
exceeded the first target.
Okay.
And at this point, I will turn, um, over to, uh, Dr. Lisa and Dr. Williford to cover the strengths. Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Corbin.
They can, they know what this is all about. Good afternoon, Karen, everyone. And while we, you do have the information listed as citywide. When we determine our strengths and challenges, we do look at what's going on as an entire division, but then we break it down by what's going on at each individual school. And we create reports that are similar to these for each school and list support and strategies that will be implemented at that building. And the strategies that we suggest are not suggestions or recommendations. They are things that must be implemented at that building. Because again, looking at things as a district level sometimes can paint one picture, but you need to know what's going on at each individual building. If we'll take a look at the slide that you have before us. This one gives us an overview of how we performed at the elementary level in English. In terms of strengths by grade, and you can determine the grade by the SOL that's listed afterwards. Um, at the fourth grade level, making and confirming predictions was a strength. At the third grade level, um, using past and present verb tense was a strength. We did not list a strength for the fifth grade because as you noted on the former chart, on the previous chart, things were so close as to what we did before that we wanted to make sure that we didn't paint a rosier picture than we should see. As far as some challenges, revising writing for clarity, um, identifying main idea, um, and identifying cause and effect. As we go through these slides, I'm not going to read every one of the strengths and challenges because I know you've already had an opportunity to do so. If you'll turn the page. As terms of next steps, one of the big focuses that you will see throughout the report is an emphasis on professional development that focuses on the depth of knowledge and unpacking the standards. Depth of knowledge, I mean, it, it really boils down to looking at Bloom's taxonomy and determining where should this be taught, how should it be assessed, at what level? If you just read the stem of any SOL objective, you can come up with some general ideas of where you should hit, but you really do have to go down into those sub-bullets and determine what is the level that the students will be assessed at because truthfully, that's been one of our biggest challenges. It's not the actual delivery, uh, the general delivery. Teachers are very well skilled at that, but as you've noticed over the past few years, our assessments have changed. They've increased in rigor. So we're focusing on increasing the depth of knowledge, not just for our teachers, but for our students. We're also focusing heavily on reading and writing across the curriculum and you'll see that throughout, throughout each content area. Um, we are working very closely with Dr. Morgan, who, um, is a retired professor from Oldhamay University. He is providing training at the elementary, middle, and high school level as well as our building specialists. They are also doing that, building and district-level specialists are providing that training. Um, another focus that we have is close reading and vocabulary instruction. And close reading, uh, basically, for those who may not be familiar with that term, it, it gets down to focusing on the meaning. Basically, you want to have students read, reread, make sure they actually understand words, that they actually understand the meaning, they understand the, the, the supporting details of what they're looking at. Because again, we do see that in years past, we had problems with children who were able to, um, read basically phonetically. Now we're noticing that our children, it's not that they can't call words, but we want to make sure they actually understand, they comprehend what they're reading. And the term, the new, it term is close reading, um, basically going deeper into the meaning of our text. Some of the things that you see as listed for additional support for our focus and priority schools, you will again see across content areas because we, as a cabinet, as well as, um, teaching and learning got together and we devised a plan of how we would support our priority and focus schools as well as our schools that are accredited with warning. In a nutshell, content teacher specialists, content coordinators, as well as retired teachers are going in on a weekly basis to these schools. We, uh, depending on the week, one week we may be going in and we're strictly planning with the teachers, meaning we're providing the actual activities, um, and suggestions for how the lesson should be delivered. Making sure they are using video E-approved resources as well as district-approved resources. The next week, those same folks will come back in. And I should mention, when they do that planning, they're planning two weeks at a time, so it's, there's not a gap. But when we're coming back on that second week, we're actually either modeling for the teachers, co-teaching with the teachers, or doing observations and providing feedback to the teacher as well as to the administrator and to our executive directors. And again, you see that listed quite, some of the, uh, it, it may be worded differently, but that's basically the gist of it. And we modify that based on the needs of the building. If we see that the building, um, the teachers need more assistance with planning, we'll put more effort into that arena.
That the individual school results that Lisa mentioned a few minutes ago were included in your executive summary, so you already have those school results.
I think that's excellent, um, and, and your additional comments on the feedback because I did notice how in the next step section, it, it did seem like it was a very generalized, you know, uh, comment that you had about feedback and observations and bi-weekly meetings, et cetera. At the end of this year, I think it would be helpful to inquire of those teachers who, who had the feedback to see if it was, if it helped them in their strategies, uh, if they would like more of it. Uh, because again, that will help us to determine what we can do financially and policy-wise to help those priority and focus schools. So, um, if, uh, this would be separate from the climate survey, but, you know, if you can just continue to get feedback from those teachers and tell us, you know, I'd like to hear some, some, some real comments, you know? If the teacher emails you and says, "I really benefited a lot," and you don't have to sell it to us at the board, but you can just send it to us via email, that would be really nice for us to hear.
And I, I don't want to get too far off track with time, but I do want to tell you that our newer teachers, because in addition to having content folks come in to assist, as Dr. Burson mentioned, we do have mentors who go in to work with our new teachers. Um, and I've already been receiving feedback from some of them saying, "Thank you so much for sending so-and-so." Because yes, she's supposed to be a generalist, but she's really coming in and she's helping me in the area of math or she's, so yes, I would love to do a little survey or get some feedback from folks on how that's going for them. Not only from the teachers, but from the administrators as well. Moving on to elementary history, um, the third grade. One of the strengths would be that government protects the rights and property of individuals. And another thing that you will see as a recurring theme, as a challenge, would be reading and constructing maps, tables, graphs, and charts. And this does overlap with our math as well. In grade four, one of our strengths is locating Virginia and its borders as well as the regions of Virginia. of Virginia. One of our challenges would be locating three American Indian language groups on a map of Virginia. And as you may know, those language groups did change, so I have a little trouble there. Moving on to some support and professional development, with the area of social studies, you know that we're about to have new standards coming out for social studies, should be out 2015. But right now, we are really emphasizing the use of the enhanced scope and sequence that the state puts out for us, also providing explicit instruction. Yes, we can do a lot of integration with the area of history, but there are some things that you actually have to teach as a direct topic. And again, conducting the frequent walkthroughs would be one of the things we're doing at our priority schools. And let me just say, when we're doing the walkthroughs, we try to do our walkthroughs with an administrator in the building, but sometimes that may not be possible just because of schedules, but regardless, we're still coming, we're going to do that focus walk as well.
Is it rollout fifteen testing sixteen, or is testing starting in fifteen under the new curriculum?
Rollout fifteen, testing should be, typically it would be not sixteen, but maybe seventeen. I'd have to go back and double-check my year on that one.
And do we have an expectation of when we're going to receive the curriculum in fifteen, so it's timely enough for us to roll it out, to be prepared for the subsequent testing?
We have not received a specific date, but we are in constant contact, as the person who is now the state coordinator was our former district coordinator. So we're in constant contact with her to get any information that we can.
Is there any potential that will change under the new direction of a new Secretary of Education? Will they choose to delay that potentially? And I'm not suggesting they will or won't, but is it at their discretion to change that if they were?
It is always at their discretion that they can, but it's not likely.
Okay.
This is a key, a key example of some things that we provided information around to the board when standards change, and you typically have two-point-five to three-years to be ready. And so what Dr. Corbin has mentioned, the centers on the steps, the beginning steps that ought to be taken, so that we're going to ensure that our central-level leaders are ready to model and make the changes and compare the current scope and sequence that deals with this particular subject area, be able to build it when all the information is there, and make the necessary modification in the classroom from the previous scope and sequence to what should be new, so that it is aligned and teachers are prepared to make that shift. Not just training teachers and providing the appropriate resources that are aligned at the curriculum, et cetera, but also having the appropriate process in place to monitor implementation, just as you're hearing now. So with the plan that we have in place now, I feel very confident about being ready in X amount of time when it happens.
Great. In terms of additional next steps, one of the things that you'll notice is that we have a focus on implementing strategies to check for student understanding. We want to make sure that we do some formative assessments before we move on to a summit of assessment when we're working on social studies. In math, we did see some areas of strength, number and number sense in grades three and four, and using order of operations in grade five. As I said before, with the maps, graphs, same thing you'll notice in grade three, interpreting graphs, reading and interpreting line plots, bar graphs, that would be a challenge for us. Addition problems in context, the word problems. And one of the focuses will be to use reading and writing in mathematics. Additional training will also focus on model drawing as a way to diagram problems and identify what the student is being asked to do. Again, it's about not following rote steps, but actually assessing students' understanding and their thought process, so that you can look for discrepancies and come up with solutions for that. Some things that we're going to be working on, meeting with our teams to do specific pacing, to provide specific pacing suggestions and activities from the Virginia Department of Ed. Science, as you noticed, was a relative strength for us. We did have areas of strength in looking at Virginia's natural resources and human impact on the Earth's surface. Some things that we really need to focus on would be the actual investigations, having students get out of just the textbook, but actually do the hands-on, problem-based learning, getting them out there, actually doing the investigations. Professional development, again, will focus on that use of depth of knowledge to increase academic rigor, looking at differentiation and reading comprehension strategies. And again, similar support for our priority and focus schools. And one thing additional I wanted to say about the support for the focus and priority schools, it really is a team approach. It's not just the curriculum and instruction folks who are going out and doing the walkthroughs and working with folks. Our executive directors are involved, as well as folks from all of our departments, even our IT folks. Andrea Secora is right there with us when we're going out. And I will now turn it over to Doctors Melissa and Williford for discussion about the elementary support. I'm sorry.
I have a question on this, and then a question going back to the beginning. On the professional development slide that you just had, can you just describe, when does that happen? Is that like a real-time thing, or is that something that you all schedule?
It's a little of both. Some of these are things that we're doing through webinars, where we will record, we'll do it live, but then we'll actually record it at the same time, so the teachers will be able to participate at their discretion, when it's convenient for them or within their building's schedule. Some things that are happening, for example, with the depth of knowledge, that's something, that training is a real-time training, where teams are going into buildings and they're meeting with teachers. They'll do that initial training, they follow up the next week, that's a weekly stop-by to make sure that we're where we need to be with that. Some things are also going to be scheduled, most of this has already been put into place. There will be follow-up training to it on January twenty-eighth, when we have our all-staff day training. But the majority of this has already taken place, because again, these assessments were given in November, so we started before.
Is there anything, schedule-wise, calendar-wise, resource-wise, anything that falls in the school board action range that can help that, or are we just good where things stand?
Do you have implications for going forward?
I don't know. Yeah, we talk a lot about professional development, even when we get to the budget priorities that shows up, it comes up again in terms of what you need. I'm just asking, as we are, where we are right now, trying to accomplish, we're trying to accomplish this year, is there anything we need to consider in addition to whatever we may need to consider in long-term?
I would suggest to the board to watch during the upcoming budget committee discussions, following what we do today. The amount of funds that we have utilized this current year for professional development, and part of that is what we, of course, continuously refer to as our now evaluation of the effectiveness of that. And once we have that pretty clarified, which is going to be a part of discussion of the committee, then we'll be ready to make some sound decisions. For example, if it is that the funds were adequate and we need to modify our delivery or rollout, then that means we need to protect the current professional development at the same level. However, if through the evaluation, we determine that it's something that we need to expand, I've got my idea about what I think we're going to see, but if we pinpoint that it needs to be an expansion, then you'll see that based on the analysis from these departments. And when you enter into that discussion as a committee, then the committee's going to be able to, based on the priorities that are determined here, attach a price tag to that, and then we'll determine based on what we need to do year two, which is what this next fiscal year is about, how much money we want to request as an expansion if that's necessary, or protecting it. That's extremely important, because that, what I've just described in somewhat a brief period of time, is what we need to do across all of those categories. Because the training to create highly effective and prepared principals to lead and model the process of what will get us to improve student achievement is of paramount importance, just as the training of teachers and differentiated training are paramount important. So I would say stay tuned for that.
And then if I could just go back on the twenty-five percent, seventy percent piece. So the seventy percent is the minimum that the state sets for what is considered accredited. Seventy percent of the students have demonstrated mastery of subjects across the school. Can you, on the rigor side, can you give me a sense of why we would shoot for seventy and not ninety, and how do we look at seventy, which may be seventy percent proficient, versus what we may have some targets for the percentage of students that are advanced proficient in different content areas?
That's a great question. And we opted to go with seventy percent for this first year, because that is the benchmark that the state has set in regard to accreditation. And our number-one priority is for us to earn accreditation for all of our schools. So we opted to stay with that, even though we understand that the seventy percent is actually higher, because it's higher than the cut scores associated with many of those tests. So we're already shooting higher than we could have said fifty-eight percent or sixty-two percent by different tests. We opted to go with the seventy percent, because that is the minimum benchmark that we need to reach this year to have more schools credited. We will increase that as time goes on, but we had a long way to go, and we felt that that was attainable for this particular year. We could have set ninety percent, and we hope that within the near future, within the next few years, we will be at ninety percent or ninety-five percent. But since our first priority is to earn full accreditation at all of our schools, we were trying to have goals that were in line with state expectations and federal accountability, and that is the expectation at the state level.
But in the ceiling and four simultaneous goal, you know, do you all look at, or at the student level, are you trying to, like, in case of some of the scores that we saw that in the first quarter, we were seeing some great success in some areas? Is there some parallel universe that's saying that, hey, we have a, not saying at the school level, but at the child level, we have this cohort of students that are already there, and that there's some parallel path that's continuing to push them?
And that exists in multiple domains. The first would be in the individual classroom level, because those scores first went back to the teacher. So the teacher was able to create goals that were specific to the needs of her children. So yes, we always want to push children to reach their highest attainable level. So there are those types of goals in individual classrooms. They're also associated with individual grade levels, where grade levels assess where they were as a whole, and establish grade-level goals to push children forward. Then schools have goals to push children forward, administrators have goals to push children forward, and then at the district level. So there are multiple goals where that is focused on the individual needs of the child, the classroom, the grade level of the building.
Just briefly piggyback on that, especially the individual goals that each student should now have in the classroom, you know, we're not one-hundred percent where we want to be with building that, but we're moving to the point that even with, in the aggregate, as a system, we have goals in terms of moving from where we are to a certain target and then to an absolute. We want students to have and understand their own profiles, to the point that they understand, here's where I am, here's where I need to be. And so now, let's establish a goal, and these are the conferences that teachers have with students, beginning to have, not across the board yet, that's what we want. And so what are we going to commit to this current year, understanding where I am and what my goal is in terms of growth? So those students that are already on standard and at the bubble of going to exceeding, then that's going to push those students to do what we just mentioned in terms of raising the ceiling and that kind of thing. So, because it's real-time, and now you see it, and you know the elements of the standards around which you need to hone in on. And so we feel that we have a multifaceted process as it relates to the levels, as Dr. Savigny mentioned, the goal-setting for students, goal-setting for teachers, goal-setting by grade level, and goal-setting at the school level, as well as the system to be able to ensure that we're doing that.
You had mentioned, Dr. King, these conversations are starting to take place, I'm assuming at the elementary level, they occur with the parents, maybe like the parent-teacher conference, the goals for the students?
But what we hope we're going to do is be able to, as it is age-appropriate, move to student-led conferences, where when we have parent nights, or curriculum nights, or whatever the case might be, or early release, parents come in for conferences. When they come in for conferences, the student is present, the parent is present, but the student leads that conference based on that profile. Teacher facilitates, and it's all about the elements of the standard in terms of what that really means. And so that's what we're training to do.
Can I ask just in general about professional development, elementary school teachers, many of them obviously teach all these subjects to these children, so they all have to be quite proficient in teaching all of these subject matters. And seeing the varied areas of opportunity identified through the CFAs, how is it that we are customizing the professional development to that teacher, so that in math in that class, we know she needs to work on this, because of the testing telling us that, and she also needs to work on this, and so on? And that's one person, many topics, many, yeah, many subject matters, many topics.
It is. Now, what we're doing right now with the push-in business that we do, we look to determine, based on their data, who needs what. In terms, say for instance, we'll use Karen. Karen teaches third grade, and Karen, her students were really just knocking it out of the box in science, but math and reading were both challenges. Well, teacher specialists are going to go in for math and reading, and we developed a schedule in my department of who's going where which day. And when they go to the buildings, the principal also has the discretion to let them know, you know, I know that his or her scores may not have been here, or they were there, I'd like for you to work specifically with this person. And that's that real-time professional development in their class, whether they're co-teaching, modeling, or doing the planning with them. In terms of the professional development activities, such as the webinars or the face-to-face workshops, those would be assigned basically by the building administrator. We'll make recommendations as far as, these are the offerings, excuse me, not recommendations, we're going to tell you, these are the offerings that we are developing for your building. And the principal is going to meet with the teachers and then give them that directive as to, you need to attend this one or that one. But we'll try to make sure that we give that face-to-face, in-the-room support. All right, Dr. Melissa and Dr. Williford?
We're going to present from back here, if that's okay, or if, no, we're not going to present from back here, we're going to the building.
Yeah, I think that if you want up here, screen. Yeah, the light's not good over there. Get washed out. You can see ghosts.
Just that we're going to keep flipping back and forth, so we play like musical chairs. Okay, so Ms. Doyle, that was a great segue into, your question was, into what we're going to talk about, because as you hear us say all the time, we need to inspect what we expect, and that is the role of the principal in the building. So the principal should be, or will be, aware of those areas of teachers that need math support or reading support. Because as you can see in the progression that Dr. King played out from the classroom to the schoolhouse, to the central office, we wanted to run like a well-oiled machine. So the principal's role in that is to notice things like that, and then look at the data and provide feedback. And as you see, for the first thing that we're going to do in our elementary leadership support, is some professional development for principals and assistant principals on providing specific detailed observation feedback to teachers that addresses curriculum standards and depth of knowledge. And what we have found through analysis of observation feedback protocols, our principals were trained at a different day and time to give very generalized feedback. And we are now working on giving them some professional development in giving very specific feedback, using examples, using specific And we are now working on giving them some professional development in giving very specific feedback, using examples, using specific SOLs, and using the depth of knowledge in the curriculum framework, what, what, how do they address what the student is supposed to know and be able to do in that lesson? So that's our first step in all of this, and that is already in progress. Our January principals' meeting will revolve around that professional development.
In addition to that, in, in working with teaching and learning, as teachers are learning to unpack the curriculum, principals are expected to unpack the curriculum with the teachers so that when they do classroom observations, they're taking the curriculum framework into the classroom and understanding what is being taught is taught at the requisite level. And so when they, again, give feedback, that feedback is linked directly back to the curriculum framework. And so we feel like that PD that is, that is happening from school to school and in clusters is a continuous one and one that we also would touch base with again in our January principals' meeting.
And then another thing that someone mentioned was whether or not the teachers found the PD to be helpful. One of the things that we need to do is ensure that school-level administrators are following up on the implementation of the PD provided by the Department of Curriculum Instruction and making sure that the teachers are using that, doing it. We do have a monthly report that we require from principals called a Warn School Protocol where those things are addressed, and we need to be in the buildings making sure that the teachers are properly implementing the new skills that they got from their professional development.
Additionally, was mentioned about differentiating by subject, and we're also looking at that in terms of the, the walkthroughs that occur each, each week. And so whereas we started the year off using the MPS Focus Walk form, we are now drilling down to specific content areas and using these look-for forms that were adopted by Teach and Learn or presented at the beginning of the year to our principals in the Leadership Institute. So they will use those look-for so that they can give specific feedback for the various content, content areas when they're conducting their walkthroughs along with teaching and learning, along with the coordinators and specialists as well.
Another thing we will do is collaborate with the content area specialists to ensure that what is being tested is being taught. Test construction is a skill in and of itself, and we need to make certain that the principals are making use of content area specialists and expertise in their buildings to support teachers as they can construct tests so we can make sure those tests are reliable and valid.
And last, but certainly not, not least, conducting hotspot conferences with principals to discuss building-level data that you may not see in the aggregate, but this aggregating data by building, as some schools may have performed better than, or, or better than what we saw in some of the, the report that, that was, was given to you. So they may have a different hotspot. And so we have to have hotspot conferences and make sure that those, the discussions that we're having are, are needs-based so that we are raising the ceiling and the floor at the same time. There are some schools that are, are meeting the, the, the expectation at this point, and so their safety nets and enrichment may look different from building to building. So to really get into that conversation, you have to have a, a hotspot report just so that we can get more specific with our principals and ensure that each building is, is getting the development, leadership development and support that's required.
Questions?
Questions and some comments. Okay, going on to next steps, we're halfway through the year, and I thought you were going to touch on when you said teacher-specific, teacher-content area. I thought you might go into maybe thinking of having one teacher teach that particular subject area, kind of like, well, Ms. Doyle alluded to the fact that the elementary teachers are having to be experts in a wide area of knowledge. At this point in time, halfway in the school year, do you feel that it's necessary at all to have teacher-specific content-area-driven classrooms, for example, math or English, to where it's that teacher, she knows the math SOLs, the students come to her, and that's all she does at the elementary level?
We look at that at each individual school level, individual. It's an individualized process, and we have done that in some schools where we saw a need and where we saw a strength in the teachers.
So that is being done then, if, if it's necessary?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then if Sharon is successful in her job fairs and she's able to hire all of these wonderfully highly-qualified teachers, and if you found the need to hire another math and reading specialist to be like our third-grade specialist and travel around to the schools to give specific guidance and content and feedback to the teachers or maybe one-on-one student help since we have these extra funds for the positions that haven't been filled yet, is that?
We'll take it.
I'm just saying, I'm, 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 I mean, I'm hearing a lot of professional development, but I'm thinking human bodies. And we're halfway within the year, and we want to get to seventy percent, ninety percent. Is that something that we, is that, is that on the, on the table for discussion?
I think each building, at each building, and when we discuss with principals in our hotspot discussions, they develop what we consider interventions that's needed based on the data, and we exhaust all possible opportunities using all possible funds. And so that's ongoing, and if it's needed, then they say the principal would share that it's needed, and we would be happy to, to use all the resources that's provided. We do not operate in, in silos, and we do a lot of collaboration with teaching and learning to ensure that the needs of each school is, is met.
Okay. That's good, good to know. And then where is the accountability housed under what department for professional development? So if I wanted to see how many hours of professional development our elementary school teachers receive, where would that be housed?
Are you asking the requirement for how many hours or what's available?
Well, there's a, there, I mean, there's a requirement, but then how, how are we tracking, is it, is it everybody kind of tracks their own or do we have a databank?
It's a little of both.
Mm-hmm.
It's a little of both. Right now, SchoolNet does have a way of tracking every professional development credit you take. I can run a report and tell you that Dr. Millie C. has taken eighteen hours' worth of training on differentiation. I just have to know her name and what we're looking for, and I, we can do that. And at the end of the year, that's what, there is a person in my shop who is assigned to do that for the schools where she will run that report and give that out to each school so the teachers don't have to keep track of all that stuff. However, if you went to a conference outside of the district, SchoolNet wouldn't know that, so you would have to actually keep up with your documentation for that yourself. But it will help me determine how many hours teachers spent in mathematics training and on what specific skill in mathematics or, and that was one of the reasons why we used the Educated Development tab in SchoolNet because we wanted to be able to track, first of all, are you using, are you going to the professional development? And then how are you rating it? Because as you asked about, now, you asked about the in-class modeling and everything. It won't necessarily track that, but it does track the surveys that you complete at the end of each professional development that are designed to give that for me so I can determine, was this facilitator a, a good fit for this training? So, yeah.
And to, to piggyback on that, teachers and administrators at the beginning of every year set goals for themselves, their, their professional development linked to those goals usually, or their needs. And then at the end of the year, every teacher is required to turn in to his or her principal a listing of all the professional development he or she has had, and then documentation to substantiate that.
Okay.
And if I may, also, don't forget, we have those interventionist positions at each of the schools as well. For example, Campus Delight, for example, has four interventionists in addition to a math and a reading specialist. So there is other support for math and reading.
And the, and the interventionists, are they, tell me, they're functioning as classroom reduction teachers?
No, no. They're supported by title funding.
So they go into the title, into the classrooms that the teachers that need extra help go to students that need extra help?
They work with caseloads of students that need help.
Sir Chairman, what is our time looking like for this particular section?
Yeah, based on our plan.
Okay. I just wanted to see.
Oh, no, I just wanted, I just want to let you know, but just in terms of, I don't pretend to understand all the interventionist specialists and so forth, but I can kind of understand ratios. So just tell me from a board perspective, do you have all of the interventionists and specialists that you need for the cohort of schools that we have that are warned? And of course, and then for all the schools? Do you have everything that you need to accomplish what you're trying to accomplish at least for this, this school year?
I would say that we can always use more if you want to do more, but we have, yes, we have what, what, what's been allocated, and, and we're working well with what's been allocated, but you can always use more. We have students who are Tier Three, the order ratio, the greater the movement, usually you can accelerate learning, learning faster, so we could use more if more is available.
Yeah, and I'm, you know, I, I don't have any, I don't have any power to give you more, but I do want to understand what you're, what you're doing with what you have versus what you really feel you need to accomplish what you are really trying to accomplish. So whatever that delta is, I just want to have a sense of it as we, as we move forward. So is it, you need a magnitude of something, you need ten more, you need twice as many? I mean, what's the, what we, what should we be thinking about?
I was just going to say, it's just a hard question to, to answer. It fluctuates with need, with, with the tiers of the children, with each school, and like Dr. Wilford said, more is always better.
That's why I was trying to separate it by some type of cohort or something, so.
You know, we are, we are fully staffed and they are working to capacity, but, you know, I met with my priority principals this morning, and they can always use more to reduce the size of, of the groups of children that are in service.
Specialists, five with the math, the three with the English, so.
I think our principals are working well with what's been allocated.
Yes, yes.
I think the data shows, and shows that, and we are working diligently to, to work smarter and more efficiently with what's been allocated. But if you ask me, do I want more? Then yes, I would always say I want more, as much as we can get for, for each student. But we're, we're implementing strategies to, to, to move the, move the masses of students that we have as, as been, as it's been allocated and feel good about where we are right now.
Okay, so we're going to stay on track.
Musical chairs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, Millen High? Okay. So we, if we're going to stay on track, and I really want us to try to stay on track, we really need to try to finish this up in the next twenty-two minutes or so. The policies won't take but a second. So let's just keep that in mind. I don't want to not receive a presentation and go write the questions, but let's, please keep that in mind.
Okay. And just real briefly, I think you have had an opportunity to review the data, and so same emphasis that were provided related to the elementary. And so I'll go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Corbin so she can talk about the strengths and challenges.
Okay, and we're into the strengths and challenges. Middle school English, and keep in mind that this year, middle school English combines reading and writing together. They're one class instead of two classes they had been in the past. What we have as areas of strength, discriminating between connotative and denotative meanings. And again, if you're looking at challenges, we have some work to do in the areas of drawing conclusions, making inferences, and identifying all this organizational pattern. Again, you'll see similar things as you saw before at the elementary level in terms of support and professional development. One of the things that we are doing a little differently at the middle school level is we're working, these, the last two bullets you see under support and professional development are actual texts that the reading specialists are doing, conducting a book study using, I mean, essential questions as well as educators as learners. And the focus and priority school support again would be similar to what you've seen before. And history, some of our challenges, excuse me, some of our strengths, looking at historical development of the Constitution and locating the seven continents and oceans. Some of our challenges include causes of the Great Depression and the impact of reconstruction policies. Eighth grade strengths would be on how individuals influence public policy, voter registration and participation, and a challenge would be the separation of powers and checks and balances. Some things that, one of my pages seems to be out of order because world, no, it's not, it's world geography. World geography, some of the strengths there would be the influence of natural, human, and capital resources on patterns, the effect of regional climatic patterns and weather on people, places, people and places. Challenges, evaluating perspectives and consequences regarding the use of resources, bless you, and how characteristics of region have led to trade labels. Again, when it comes to the next steps, one of the big things that we're working on right now would be selecting graphic organizers and strategies. Again, the strategies that you see under history roll right into the reading area that they overlap. And again, we're to be conducting those frequent focus walks as well as providing feedback to the teachers, administrators, and executive directors. And science, science, one thing we want to make sure that everyone keeps in mind is we are on a modified four-by-four at the middle school level, and I should have said this for social studies as well, science and social studies, half of the children are taking their class, their history, in the fall, and they will take science in the second semester. Yeah, I got that word. It's hard for me to get, to get that word out. And the other half will take science in the first semester and history in the second semester. So when you're looking at scores, you need to keep in mind that it's half of the children at any one grade level, but they will flip-flop so that by the end of the year, they've had both. Grade seven strength would be the function of genes and chromosomes, and a grade eight valid conclusions are made after analyzing data. Again, challenges, challenges, the nature of matter such as the characteristics of types of matter based on physical and chemical properties. And middle school biology, one of the strengths would be looking at severe weather occurrences such as tornadoes, hurricanes, and major storms like we're experiencing earlier this week. And challenges would be looking at current theories related to the effects of early life on the chemical makeup of the atmosphere.
In terms of the stress, if you can, like, just talk about the next steps, I mean, just...
Get right to them.
No offense, I mean, I just...
Next steps, one of the things that we're doing is looking at pre-AP strategies to make sure that we are in getting our children prepared to go into AP courses. And again, using the five Es of the learning cycle in science, which would be engage, explore, explain, extend, and evaluate, basically making sure that our children have an opportunity to do hands-on experiments and actually talk about what they are learning. And again, the focus walks and things would be similar.
What is your, what is your take on the fact that we have a large percentage of our students in middle school that are not at the 25th percent proficient level?
One of the things we've noticed, again, with this being our first year on this modified four-by-four, we are doing a lot of professional development with the teachers right now because initially they were having trouble making the adjustment with pacing themselves. So we've done power planning sessions with each grade level where we bring in representatives. And in some cases, we've done power planning sessions with individual schools where we'll make, yes, we have a district-level pacing guide, but we map out for this particular building how you need to remediate. For example, on days one and two, you're going to teach these specific skills. And we've just basically done a modified pacing to make sure that our teachers are being able to remediate those areas that they're weak on as well as move forward. But again, we think that the biggest issue was with the pacing because it was such a, it was a mind shift for teachers and students.
So if a student takes history in the fall, are they still tested on the SOL in the spring? They'll have to reme-
No, they'll take their SOL test this month.
Oh, okay.
Yes, at the end of this month.
Okay.
They will take their end of course SOL test or their grade level.
The grade level specific.
The state one, what about the state one?
That is the state level.
That is the state one, okay. So when did they start doing the semester-type changes?
They've always done, well, not always, but they've done the model, they've done four-by-fours across the state. And some school districts would actually administer their exams in past years in December. This year it was pushed back to January. I believe you have a window and we selected the latter part of January for our students. And that's all, in previous years, you may have heard us make comments about, for example, with the math, that some students in Northern Virginia had not scored well. So we looked at where they were scoring and we made some modifications to things and some additional resources may have been shared with everyone across the state based on what happened in a region that had already tested earlier.
And it's just science and history right now?
Do we have enough funds for, available for the ABC approach?
When you said the ABC.
The activity before content approach, I'm assuming that's the hands-on scientific investigation?
Oh, yes, 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 yes. This one, it really does not involve any additional funding for that, there's no additional.
Not for the hands-on activities?
No, because these are materials that they should already have. And my department does provide additional revenue if needed. But that typically comes out of the school's individual budget if there are materials of need.
I just was thinking that it's going to be costing more to have students actually have activities at their desk versus what I've heard about called the sit-and-get method of teaching.
And one of the things math and science are in the process of doing, they should be wrapping up right now. Both of those areas are actually conducting, they looked at the beginning of the year and they're doing another evaluation of materials and tools that are available in the classrooms to determine if we do need to provide additional items and materials. And I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Coleman, who's going to talk about the leadership next step.
And I'm not nearly as good-looking as Dr. Charbonneau or as smooth around the edges, but I know you'll suffer through with me as well. So for middle school leadership next steps, you'll find that it is not that much different than the elementary folks. The professional development for principals and assistant principals to assist them in providing specific detailed feedback to teachers that addresses the curriculum standards and depth of knowledge. That is a reoccurring theme that you're going to find for all of us at all levels throughout the entire year. I would also like to add, you know, when you talk about professional development and the formal professional development you heard, this is really embedded, you know, professional development. It occurs as we go, as we see it, and really every opportunity we get into a building. So it's not formalized, scheduled, it's when we can get in there and provide it, okay? In addition, professional development for principals and assistant principals on monitoring teacher compliance with the alignment of the taught and the tested curriculum. So again, not a lot of difference there either. Professional development for principals and assistant principals on the use of data in planning instruction and include monitoring and follow-up. So that's looking at the lesson plans, making sure that we pull in, you know, our content specialists as well. And then lastly, professional development for principals and assistant principals on current best practices for classroom instruction for adolescents and how to recognize that level of implementation in the classroom. Adolescents, in terms of their characteristics, haven't changed significantly. However, adolescents in the 21st century have. And so looking for best practices and what we can do in classrooms that will reach children at that level is certainly a focus.
Rather than have Mr. Coleman move because he does have to discuss the leadership next steps for high school, I can tell you that in general, the next steps for each of the four core areas involves having folks really push in specifically in math. Math will be our hotspot at the high school level and we are using everything that we have, every person and every resource that we have. We have contacted and contracted with colleges. We also have quite a few of our retired teachers who are successful who are going in and they are modeling as well as, in some cases, teaching small groups to catch our students up with in area of math.
Now you're a good-looking high school director.
Those schools that are listed as priority. Is there some extra support that those schools receive, you know, from the state, from the school improvement program that, that's, I shouldn't say that's helpful. Is there some extra support that they get? Because I noticed that when I'm looking at the executive summary, that those schools are lagging a bit. And I know that there's a lot involved with SGTs and data reporting and a zillion other things that I imagine principals and teachers have to deal with. But in terms of specific resources, whether it's professional development that we're talking about or other items that you all have identified, do those things appear with the school improvement? Or how do we deal with those schools, perhaps special circumstances beyond others?
Well, in addition to the professional development and support that's offered at the district level, one of our schools already has a lead turnaround partner assigned to them. And that lead turnaround partner provides in-building professional development to teachers as well as to the administrators. The other school, I believe, is in the process, they should have theirs. And this is based on a state funding model of when this should be happening. They should have theirs, I believe, by the end of this month.
Right, but if you have a lead turnaround partner, we have the cycle for results and other things that we're doing, does the lead turnaround partner then get in line with what our prescription is? I'm just trying to get a feel for how that works.
It's a little of both. Yes, they do have to, we work very, very closely together with the lead turnaround partners. Two of our elementary, three of our elementary, no, two of our elementary schools already have a lead turnaround partner as well. We actually do plan with them. However, they have additional resources that they bring to us. But before they implement anything, we have a conversation to make sure that is aligned to what we need in the state of Virginia and specifically for our schools.
It's also still after clearly the contract that we have with the lead turnaround partners, exactly what they're about.
So at the high school level, the next steps in terms of leadership would be to monitor and provide prescriptive feedback for school-level focus walk teams and ensure that the areas of focus align with the written, taught, and tested curriculum. The focus walk teams are relatively new this year. And as a result, it really has opened the door for us to have the right conversations with teachers and with departments in terms of the standards and the curriculum and what is tested. In addition, to collaborate with content area specialists to monitor and provide support with the development of teacher lesson plans that align with the components of the school lesson plan evaluation tool. We've been going through, you know, our academic reviews and we are going to take, you know, the structure of those academic reviews. And even though we're doing them just for the warned schools right now, we're going to be doing it for all of the schools or for all of our high schools, whether they're warned or not, to be able to look at, you know, what kind of feedback we can get. Professional development for principals and assistant principals on providing specific detailed observation feedback that addresses curriculum standards and depth of knowledge. We certainly don't want to forget rigor and we want to keep that as a focus as well. And then to ensure that like-subject course content area PLCs, that's at the teacher level, are focused on individual student progress using data determined mastery and areas of concern, and then followed by prescriptive individual plans for needed corrective action. And that's the reteaching, retesting, and doing it efficiently. We've got things in place, but sometimes we need to step back and look at those things to make sure that they're actually working and that even though we may be spending money and providing a service, are we getting our bang for the buck in terms of, you know, what we're getting from a student in terms of improvement? And so that's a focus area as well.
Questions?
Are you taking?
Yes.
So a student takes the test and then if they don't score at a certain level, then do they retake the test soon thereafter? Is that how that works?
They have that opportunity. They can, we try to provide a means of reteaching, you know, providing, you know, what was that weakness? What caused them not to do well on that test? Remediate that or reteach that and then give them the opportunity to retest and master that area.
And it, just generally speaking, is there such a thing as testing fatigue? I mean, can, do we, can you have a scenario where if children are just constantly tested that either they get burned out by the testing or don't take the test as seriously because they just feel like they're always in the process of testing? And if so, do we see any of that and how do you guard against it if?
I certainly think that exists. You know, it exists on an individual basis, based on the stressors that a particular student, you know, may have in their life. You know, teachers, you know, look to not create that stress for their students. At the same time, it's providing an opportunity for that student, you know, to be successful. And most students want to take advantage of that. They don't want to fail. So by providing these different opportunities, it provides that level of success. If there is the testing fatigue or the frustration of having to retake tests, hopefully that's motivation to come back and let's get it right the first time, you know. But, you know, if we don't do those things, you know, the alternative is the student is not mastering the content, the student is more likely to fail the course.
Just a dovetail on that, is if we're trying to get kids college-ready, is that a wise strategy? Because they don't let you do that in college. You don't, if you don't pass the test the first time, if you don't turn your homework in on time, you pay for it. And my children both have had to deal with that. It's just, there's got to be a balance. I know we want to get kids to succeed, but we've got to motivate the kids to succeed the first time. Instead of become reliant on the test, retest scenario.
During your grades are being placed, whatever grade they get on the first test is the grade they get, correct?
Not necessarily. You know, there may be a percentage, you know, that will help boost it up because ultimately, you know, we're looking for mastery. You know, I understand what Dr. Robinson is saying, you know, that, you know, are we coddling, you know, students to a certain extent to get them through? But the other side of that is ultimately, we want them to know the content. We ultimately want them to have that mastery. And quite honestly, you know, right now, you know, in the circumstances that we are, anything that we can do to help boost them to that mastery is what we need to be doing.
Very quickly, to that point, mastery is certainly the key. And this too represents a paradigm shift for many educators because no longer should we be focused on an assessment mentality that says that because I scored at 68% proficiency initially, that that's the end-all and be-all. Or I didn't meet the benchmark, expected benchmark. There should be opportunities for students to go back and master based on the elements of the standards. And so when we truly evolve to where we know we really need to be, then grading becomes standards-based. It's not just an overall percentage. I mean, you get to an overall percentage on an average, but to get there, you have various elements of the standard that you're scoring to indicate to the student and to the parent where the student is proficient to reach this overall piece. So it is about mastery and that means that if Sam King did not master that standard over the first two-week period of time in teaching, then he ought to be given the opportunities to continue with the reteaching of the safety net to get to mastery. So it's not like before when students received a failing grade on a certain number related to elements of the standard and they never had an opportunity to go back. And that's about replacing a 50 with mastery because when that student grows and their light bulb is there, and then now they move to 80%, 85%, then that's really reflective of what that student knows and is able to do. That's a different kind of thinking than we have been accustomed to when we were in the classroom. So that's just something to also think about in terms of adjustments that we know we need to make, even with grading.
Okay, and that is, you know, a last thought to ponder is up on your screen. It is a quote, and this draws to a conclusion the presentation for teaching and learning.
And thank you all for the work put into this. And again, I think we're getting really, really close to where we want to be in terms of the formats and information for our presentations. So thank you. We have just a couple of policies to review and adopt under teaching and learning. The first one is IA and it deals with instructional goals and objectives. I think this is a new policy. We see the VSBAs version and the recommended version for us. Dr. Sevigny, any comments on this?
We ask that the board accept the policy. It does not change our practice. We have all of this in place. It is simply a new policy that came down the pike, so to speak, from VSBAs.
Any questions on this policy? Okay. All right, these will be placed on our consent agenda for the 22nd, okay? All right, the next policy is JFCA. And it is actually the one that we've looked at a couple of times before, dealing with the teacher removal of students from the class. Any comments on it, Dr. Sevigny?
I will defer to Dr. Lyons.
Okay. Good afternoon, Dr. Houston, Dr. Robinson, Dr. K, members of the board. The policy JFCA, teacher removal of students from class, has presented before and there were questions that came up in reference to that. And so I'm here to address those as well as Mr. Cloud helped us make some updates to that. Mrs. Carol Hamlin is here also, if there are any specific questions. But one of the concerns that came up was in reference to teachers' ability to remove students from class as needed in terms of them if there were issues with disruption. And so Mr. Cloud has assisted us with making some adjustments to the previous policy. And one of those things that was addressed in the previous time was in terms of having the term "shall" in there. And some of the updates included adding that "may" remove to make that particular adjustment from the suggestions that we received the last time. Originally, it was making sure that legal references and cross-references were added to the VSBA policy or from our previous version.
Are there any? Yes. Brad?
Under the requirements for incident reports, above it you say, actually, at the beginning, teachers have the initial authority to remove students from class for disruptive behavior and then the criteria for removal. And then the second paragraph that says a student may not be removed from class for disruptive behavior under this policy unless two written incident reports have been filed with school administrators. Or a school, yeah, and provide to students blah, blah, blah. There seems to be an incongruency in the language.
Well, in the first paragraph, you see the sentence, this policy applies where the student- the student behavior is minor or not repeated. That, that was meant to cover.
I understand, but what you, you contradict that in the, in that paragraph at the bottom of it, a student may not be removed from class unless two written incident reports have been filed.
Well, the, the idea was that this policy only applies to minor events or continuous ones, and it wouldn't apply to anything, but we can change that.
I'm, I'm just saying, in my reading, it's, it's incongruent.
Can you revise that?
You can either remove them or you can't.
Any other thoughts on that particular point that Brad is making? Yes.
Much of the policy changes come to us, come because just today, the General Assembly of Virginia for 2014 began. Things happen in that General Assembly that results in VSBAs recommending policies because of the things changed in the General Assembly. From time to time and frequently, we as a school board, like in the devices, excuse me, not just cell phones, but now devices, have, have policies of local initiation. Most of these things come because of things that we really can't change, and thank goodness we have VSBAs to help us.
Brad, you recommend a word change here? Is there a vision you recommend?
Well, I, I guess a different term then, may not be removed for whatever reason for disruptive, because again, you're, you're contradicting what you're saying at the bottom.
Are you on the red, are you on the clean page or the red?
I'm on the clean page, but I go back to the red line. The red line is the top of page two.
Top of page two.
What's underlined, a student may not be removed from class for disruptive behavior under this policy unless two written incident reports have been filed with school administrators. In the beginning part of it, it says it just may be, the student may be removed if, if he's causing a minor, minor disruption, which means, makes sense to me. I mean, if you, if you tried to calm the kid down and he's not going to listen, then you send him out to the principal's office or, or the appropriate place. But then later, it says you can't do it until you have two written notices.
Well, the, the intent there was to mean you can't do it under this policy, and this policy only applies to minor events, but I can rewrite that.
I, I would just, that, just to clean it up.
Yeah, I guess I was trying to be clear. Are we, are we trying to give the teacher more authority and leeway, or are we trying to give the teacher less authority and leeway?
Well, we only have so much ability wiggle room because there's, most of the language is dictated by statute.
Correct.
But that, that was what I was trying to do. I think the last time there was concern that if you could interpret it in a way that would not make sense, but still require teachers to.
Greater, greater than?
Give notes or whatever, even with somebody's.
Or is it kicked out of the class for good? So it just click that, if it's removed from class for that day, is it removed class permanently?
It seemed like it, it talked about almost both because it talked about the in-school suspension, and then if the principal decided to send them back into the class, they would meet with the teacher, so that was a little.
See, I had no problem with what was written here with that. That, that's fine in my mind. It's the, it's, you're, you're, again, you're contradicting yourself when you say, we can remove the kid, but only if you give two reports.
Again, I can fix that. The decision was to distinguish this as a policy that applies to minor or continuous behavior, or not continuous behavior. The idea being if it's continuous or if it's major, somebody could get hurt, then they are immediately removed.
Now, does it, and again, that boils to the question, does that, is that a temporary removal or a permanent removal from the class?
Well, that would be a decision for the principal.
Right. Okay, so, so Jack, can you?
I can rewrite that. What I can do is email the revised draft so that I might be able to stay on the consent agenda. You want to try to vote on it today?
Right, no, we wouldn't vote on it today. I mean, it would go on the consent agenda. I'm trying to figure out if you do it via email, are we going to be able to, because we don't have any formal session, so there would have to be some reading of it prior to.
Yeah, when I said that, I, I was, I was thinking, I didn't realize we wanted to keep it on today. To keep it on today, I'll need to sit down and rewrite.
No, no, we're not going to vote on it today. He wants to put. It would, it would go on the consent agenda for the 22nd, and I'm saying, you want it via email without any opportunity for, for discussion prior to vote because of the new structure of our business meeting now, there's just really no, no other place for it. I don't think this is so important that we couldn't vote on it in February. Are we in agreement with that? So we don't have to try to force it for the 22nd if we really need to reword that. Is everybody okay with that?
Okay with it, but if we're just taking out that one part, then that's the only part.
Okay, so here are options. We do have a, we used to go here and do a couple of other policies coming under operations, and so if, if it's something you feel like you can do in the next, you know, couple of minutes, and then when we get to those other policies under operations, we could read, you know, listen to what you've rewritten and see if that works for us? Is that okay? Is that too much pressure?
Uh, no.
Talk about test fatigue. Okay, all right, so we'll, we'll come back to that with the next policies. Now, JN, related fines, fees, and charges. I'm told some more work needs to be done on that one, so we're pulling JN.
Yes.
To be reconsidered later.
Yes.
Okay, good enough. Thank you very much. All right, item 2.03 now for, that's going to come under operations. Yes. Okay, I'm almost afraid to ask, are you, you all okay? Do you need a five-minute? Are you, everybody's good?
You need a break, Brad?
Yeah.
You need a break.
Okay.
TV timeout.
Okay, all right, yeah. Okay, so let's, let's really try to do five so we stay on, stay on track, okay? All right.